Okay, we all rise and join us in the presence of the Speaker.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'm required by law to make the following announcement. I have to announce that this meeting is being both video and audio taped. And I have to ask, is there anybody doing the same? You are? You're in charge of that camera tonight. Thank you. Okay. Any comments and concerns?
I'll be last if anybody else...
I saw Mr. Cuomo back there. Go ahead.
I just have a question with regard to the taping. Because it's taping at my meeting now. Now, if anyone in your thing, if anyone objects, what happens? In your notice that you read, it says if anyone objects, right? Or you just have to make them aware?
Just have to make them aware.
Okay.
If they don't like it, they could, I guess they're... You have to let them know they're being taped. You can't tape or record anybody's voice without letting them know. That's the law. All right?
Well, that's what I did. I mean, we read it into our minutes.
And we can't prevent anybody from taping or recording.
No, we didn't.
As long as they make it known.
Okay.
All right?
That was just my question, because it was the first time in a long time that I've ever had that happen. So I wanted to be clear.
Okay, Mr. Caravola, you have something to say?
Is she done?
You're done. You're right done.
Yes, I am.
All right. Igor?
I'd just like to inform the viewing public that we had a hardware problem with our broadcasting system. The whole unit's been shipped out Monday. We supposedly get it back this Friday coming back. We are capable of going out live, but we cannot program anything and we cannot broadcast anything from the tapes. So you notice that some games are missing, the state bylaws are missing, school committee is missing because we don't have access to the computer. What happened was that two hard drives burned out today and a hard drive part burned out too on it. I got a good news today because the company that fixed it, this problem about eight months ago, told us that there were charges only for the two hard drives that might have functioned. There were no charges for the labor and there were no charges for shipping back their equipment. But it was a steep price on it because one day shipping, we shipped it out yesterday, one day shipping, overnight shipping, was $400 for that thing. So to ship that. But we felt, the committee we felt was necessary to get it quick as we can. So we did ship it out. On the way back, it's not going to cost us.
You have the money to pay, right?
We apologize for that. We do it best we can. And the company that's fixing it, they said if this one goes, they're going to give us a brand new one.
Are you going to lose this after it was recorded on it?
Uh, no. We have the tapes. Tonight's meeting, we're recording on the two cameras. So we will have the tapes of tonight's meeting. So as soon as the system is fixed, we can rebroadcast it and play it.
The things like the state park, you're not going to lose those?
No. But we still got the tapes and we still got them. And we apologize again. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to have a two-minute recess. Okay, Mr. Dolinsky, would you join me, please? Okay, another call to recess over. Mr. Caravola, I think you asked to say something?
Yeah, I have a few comments and questions. As we all stood here tonight and pledged allegiance to the United States of America, I want you three selectmen to contemplate how many people have given their very lives so that we all can have freedom of speech. If everyone goes on... Okay, now, all I have is three pieces of paper here, okay? All this paper is here is my freedom of speech, my freedom to express my feelings through speech, no matter who agrees or disagrees with its content. There's nothing written on this paper that I couldn't say on Oprah or Dr. Phil. There are no cuss words. I'm simply speaking from my heart and mind. What I see is truth. If everyone goes on the website, warren-mass.info, you will see where Mr. Dolinsky tried to deny my right to freedom of speech by telling me I could not read a piece of paper because it was a political speech, when in fact it was a concerned citizen's speech. Someone who simply cares about Warren and wants people to see and understand what's going on behind and in front of their own eyes. Also, another meeting, I was drawn out by Mr. Downing denying my freedom of speech who sicced his rabid dog on me, your very own chief of police. And I want to give congratulations to Sajid Leflower. He doesn't, he's not one of your dogs. All because I was exposing just a couple of your lies and waste of hard-earned taxpayer dollars. I got a question for you, Mr. Dolinsky. You don't have to answer it out loud. As much as this town needs new income, the best you can come up with is, "Please patronize few remaining businesses in town." I was wondering if you or any of the other two present selectmen, de-selectmen, attended the corned beef cabbage supper to benefit the West Warren Library. Okay, and I want to thank Mr. Barrow for establishing this website so people can see what's going on. It's all there. It's all there. Just get on there and you can watch this one tonight if you got, you know... Anyways, I thank you for educating Warren and West Warren residents with the town's own public records. This is only the tip of the iceberg that these four supposedly public servants sitting here tonight tried so desperately to hide from us. And the last comment, the money that you supposedly public servants have wasted on legal bills to the taxpayers for your own dishonesty could fund West Warren Library for the next 10 years.
All right, you're making an accusation now.
I'm all done, Mr. Downing. I'm all done with it.
Thank you.
I'm just reading the paper, sir.
This'll be the last time...
I'm reading paper. That's all. My freedom of speech, sir. That's all I'm asking for.
It's not a freedom of speech. You're campaigning.
Yes, it is. It's questions and comments. I'm not campaigning.
I'm doing the talking right now.
It was questions and comments.
And if you don't allow me to talk, I'm going to call you out of order, all right? Now, listen to me.
To speak the truth, that's all you have to do. And I'll be fine. Just speak the truth.
Nobody on this board tells anything but the truth, all right?
Baloney.
All right.
Baloney. Ninety-nine out of 100 words is a lie. You about 50, and he never says nothing.
All right, you're out of order. You're out of order.
I'm going to come back for the camera, okay? Because I don't even want to breathe the same air right now. I'll be here to pick that camera up when you close. I'll be waiting in the hallway.
Take it with you. I don't want the responsibility.
I don't have to take it with me. Let it go.
Mr. Chairman, before you leave, you might be, might go ahead. Freedom of speech, I'm going to give my little piece.
All right.
I'm sitting tired. I'm listening to your baloney.
My baloney?
Your baloney. You don't have any idea what goes on with this board. They work hard for this money that this town receives. You're blaming an individual for a tax, the loss of taxes or increased taxes in this town? You must be out of your mind. Do you know that these three people are fighting hard to get revenue for this town? And you make these accusations that are a bunch of crap.
It's all on the internet, sir. It's all on the internet.
That's your twisted mind.
Sir, listen to me.
All right, I get this floor.
You do?
Yeah, yes, I do.
I do too.
Did I interrupt you?
Let him talk. His floor.
Brian's talking to me. Are you talking to me?
I'm talking to the board, not you.
Well, you're looking at me talking to me, so I'm going to answer you.
Brian.
I just want the truth.
If you don't listen to me, Brian, you're out of order and I'll have you expelled again.
His opinion is his opinion and my opinion is my opinion. Give your opinion. I have no problem. Say what you have to say.
Well, why the hell don't you shut up then? Mr. Chairman, I am sick of these guys coming in and interrupting this meeting with this baloney. To blame the selectmen for loss of business in this town is baloney. And to blame an individual because he's costing this town money and a tax rate is so far out that this guy has got, I don't know where he comes from or what he's been drinking, but it is wrong. And I am, as an individual, sick of it. This guy and his friend are just in here to bully electronically this committee and tie up this town with this crap. I am sick of the accusations. You should walk in their shoes before you make these kind of comments. You have no idea the time they put in. Maybe they missed the supper too, but maybe they were in another meeting. You don't know that.
If he's talking to me, I have to answer.
Why you don't have to answer?
No, he's not even talking to me.
I don't want you to answer.
Freedom of speech, Mr. Downing, remember, we're on camera here. That's all I want. And the truth and freedom of speech. He's not intimidated. I have my opinion.
Don't be intimidated by that little camera.
No, I'm not intimidated.
And the website they have just spills out crap.
I'm very humbled by your getting up, Mr. Nickerson. There's a Purple Heart veteran right there, has done more than his share of work for this town. Okay, and he's telling you his feet are, you should listen to him. Now, I don't want no more response. You're done, okay? You're done. Thank you.
His opinion is his opinion and my opinion is my opinion.
Well, your opinion is nothing but false accusations.
And you have your right.
False accusations. You have no substance.
Let the people get on the website and judge for themselves.
Well, let me tell you something.
It's all on your voice.
Not any more campaigning and any more tweeting here.
I don't want to breathe any more of your air, so I'm going to leave. I'll be back.
Thank you. Please do. Thank you for accommodating us. Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to make an announcement because of Mr. Caravola's expounding and lengthy campaigning. I'd like to invite any candidate for any elected office to come forward and we'll send out a letter inviting you. And I'm going to establish a date right now. I'm going to offer all candidates equal time to come in here and make themselves known. Will you stop distracting me?
I'm not campaigning. I'm a concerned citizen. That's all I am. I'm not campaigning. I'm concerned about my town.
Hey, you're out of order. I do not recognize you.
I'm not a coke machine either. I have free speech.
Mr. Leflower, will you take him outside, please, and explain to him why he's out of order? He don't seem to recognize out of meetings or runs.
You're the one who's out of order, Joe. Not me.
I'm going to, uh, the 22nd, the 22nd day of April, at the regular meeting for the Board of Selectmen. Lorena, I want all candidates to be sent a letter that they're welcome to come that night and on camera make themselves known. And we'll give them each five minutes to discuss what they'd like to achieve and why they're running, if anything, or at least acquaint themselves with the public, all right? I think we ought to... Anybody else got any comments and concerns? You're on, we're on the agenda for that. If that's your subject, is that what you want?
Yeah, I figured you probably didn't have a chance to review it because Mr. Dolinsky just gave it to me, but...
We haven't had a chance to review it.
Yeah, I couldn't do it.
And I can tell you another thing. We have a meeting with them. In fact, we're having a meeting with them. You're going to hear it in the... Rosemary Scrivens, Central Regular Director of Mass Office of Business Development and the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development, Greg Bellicki. They're going to be here and they're going to be at the water pumps on April the 3rd, and we're going to meet with them over there, all right? And until then, we're not going to have anything really final that we want to be talking about, all right?
All right. Thank you.
So if you'll be tolerant with us, this is not something that's easy to get.
I know.
All the facts and figures.
But just remember too, when you see the top of this, this is, they combined the two companies. It has nothing...
There are two businesses.
Two businesses combined into one report, and it's not right. You want the report just for the...
Well, I can't say if it's not right. You know, that's not my...
Yeah, you want the point just for the pulling valve. This is combined.
All right, but I just didn't want you to think, you know, when them dropped the ball, we've been working on this.
I know.
But we have to go with the assessors, the people over there, and the state people.
Okay.
Got a coordinator, all of our thoughts and thinking on this because they are a small company and they do employ a handful of people. We don't want to say something wrong and make them mad and have them just pick up and bail out of here, you know? We want them to stay here. If they've done something wrong and we think, you know, they owe us something, we'll be glad to tell them. But we don't want to irritate any business right now and take a chance on losing them, all right?
Okay.
So we want to get all the facts together, and as soon as we get them all, we'll answer your questions.
Okay.
In full. I guarantee it, all right? I take my word.
Could I say something?
Yes, you can.
Just, uh, Lorena, could you check, have, check a couple of things out for me? Did you check on the third page, the last three lines on the bottom? It says fiscal year 2000 property taxes exempted due to the TIF or the STA, and it says zero. Then it says total property taxes exempted due to the TIF or STA since approval on 9/27, and both zero. I'd like to confirm that, that we haven't exempted them from anything yet. Because according to what they've got here, they have not, we haven't exempted anything yet. I think that's an important fact.
I'll follow up with the Board of Assessors.
Board of Assessors or whoever does it, that has to do it is according to what they've given us here, they haven't, they have not been taken anything. Have not, they have not been, had anything exempted yet. I'd just like to double-check that. And I will ask some questions when they come here as far as I want to see how many jobs actually, if indeed this is a double type of thing, two businesses, I want to know how many jobs were created from the new business and how many people from Warren were hired with that. Those are the three things I'd like to know.
Okay, that takes your comments and concerns? All right, let's get a, go on, correspondence, Mr. Lavash.
Okay. They have a request from Richard Zaporowski seeking reappointment to the zoning board of appeals for a term of two years through June 2016.
I would move that we appoint Richard Zaporowski to the zoning board of appeals for the two years through 2016.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All fair and...
Aye.
Aye, so be it. Do you want to make up one of those appointment things, Lorena?
Yes, sir.
I will sign that.
I have a memo from the planning board. They are proposing an amendment to the zoning bylaws at annual town meeting. Protocol is for the office to forward the draft proposals to town council for review and comment. In light of the fiscal constraints, we'd like the direction from select board and how to proceed.
All right. My understanding is we're out of legal funding. Is that right?
Yep.
What I've been told.
And you don't want to fund us anymore? Is there any way you can...
Well, I had a couple of thoughts on that.
Well, I know, I know the point of it is, you're not supposed to fund anything that's unexpected or something. Go ahead.
I believe some of this was unforeseen.
Right.
My second thought is, um, if we have fees associated with the solar projects and the, is it Conservation that has the special fund for collecting fees? Or is it Planning Board that maybe we could full sum?
I think it's Conservation.
Um, because I didn't know if they did any reviews that we could maybe...
I'm not sure. That's why I'm not answering. I'm not sure. I'd have to look into it.
Why don't we look into that? In the meantime, what if we tried this? I'm not saying it's going to work because I don't know. What if we requested that the planning board got in contact with Central Mass Regional Planning and see if they can help in this matter? They might be able to. If I'm not right, if I'm not wrong, the planning, I think Central Mass Regional Planning has to give us so many hours a year for help?
Probably in terms of legal?
In terms of looking at things at least. Maybe they can... I don't know if it's, I don't know if it'll work or not, Lorena, but I know that we used them in the past for certain things and maybe they can help us on this one. Remember, we used them before for some... Maybe they'll help us on this one. For the meantime, we'll have to look into the other thing.
I mean, some of these fees were unforeseen. You never know when a suit or investigation is going to come up, just like with fire department and their ALS fees. I mean, you can't plan when people are going to be sick. It's the human factor. So, I mean, as far as giving a RAT, it's probably a possibility.
Now, how about the DOR is the one that said we... I know there's new rules. The DOR is the one that said we couldn't do that, or...
Well, I mean, the definition of a RAT is for unforeseen expenditures. But I mean, if you have a large lawsuit that comes into town or a large plan review or plan application that comes into town that's unexpected, I mean, it happens. And I mean, you can't plan for it at the beginning of the year.
How about the legality is involved with...
Well, that would be...
That's cost every department. Is that legal advice because of this?
Well, all right, that could be unforeseen. I mean, at the beginning of the year.
It is unforeseen.
We weren't planning on it happening, well, it wasn't budgeted for in the legal expense line. You know, we went by the average of what we spent over the past 12-month period.
Is there a limitation on when you can do a RAT?
No, a RAT can be done any time of the year. Line item transfers has the limitation of May and June only. Well, May, June, and part of July.
Well, let's see. When is our, our next meeting? Would be the meeting before the Ridgeford Town Meeting.
Yeah, wouldn't be until, wouldn't be until May.
We couldn't make any expenditures between now and then.
Well, that's the question. The question is, is if there's some unforeseen expenses that we didn't plan for, then would you be able to give a RAT? Now, the problem with that is, I would normally say in this situation, to call, get a hold of town council and go through it with them. Maybe. Give me a number for DOR, please.
Yeah, Madeline has a regular contact person there.
Okay, I'll see if I can talk to him.
All right.
That shouldn't cost us anything, please.
No.
No, we pay that with our taxes paid out.
All right, so you're taking the point on that there?
Yep, I'll take that. Just remind me, Lorena, if you can get me, get the contact from Madeline for that.
Okay, Mr. Lavash, proceed, please.
We have a memo from the planning board. As a floodwater is aware, Kurt Maylin from Solar Energy is proposing a solar energy farm in West Warren. Within that proposal is a request from the developer to enter into a pilot agreement with the town. Mr. Maylin has been working with town planner William Scanlon thus far. The planning board is in full agreement that Mr. Scanlon be the point person on this project with regards to the pilot.
I have no problem with that.
I don't either.
We can also see if we cannot have Mr. Scanlon work through somebody else that is familiar with it also?
Yeah, well, there's other people, and I wanted to add to this here because the laws have changed on this solar energy grants. The last 10 days, I'm told that the state has come up with some new laws relative, and there's plenty of grant money, but the state has changed the priorities from these large acreage units. And the priority is going to be brownfields. They're going to, these grants are going to be given out to, number one priority, brownfields and closed landfills. So it puts us high on the list of priorities that come by these. And I'm doing some roadwork on these as I made it to both you and Mr. Lavash. And this, uh, the guy that's able to help us mostly is this Kurt Maylin again. So he didn't spell out his full involvement here other than that, I think it's up on the street, you're going to be...
In the street in Baton.
Street in Baton. Well, I know you have nothing to do with it. I didn't, but I was just trying to locate that in my mind. But with these new regulations in place, we could have more say about putting this solar energy up there and we could hire somebody to help us and we'd get the bulk of that grant money. In other words, we'd get the big piece of that money or somebody else on these other projects that's got the big piece of pie and we've got what they're willing to give us, all right? But it puts us in the driver's seat and I want to let you know we got a meeting with these guys. Bill Scanlon's holding this meeting at 10:00 a.m. on the 26th, and that's the Wednesday, 26th. Going to meet, there's three people coming and Bill. And one of these guys is this Kurt Maylin. I don't know who the other two are, but they're people interested in doing the solar energy on our landfill. But I'm telling you guys, and I'm inviting you both to be there if you got the time and don't have to go to work.
When's the meeting?
Were you retired yet, Damon?
Where's the meeting?
It's going to start off in Bill Scanlon's and the planning planners roll down there and then it's going to go, it's going to be at 10:00 a.m.
I'll see if I can get there.
And then we're going to go up to the landfill. And I'm keeping you guys posted because I said before, this is not the Board of Health, Board of Health's property. The Board of Health is managing the town property. It's town property and we're talking about it, you know? And this, I think this is a great opportunity. I think this is one of the things that you know what we've been working for all along to make that landfill totally dependable, independent.
Don't take it concerned over time because, I mean, what's under the cap will deteriorate or rot. So I mean, it's going to settle over time, yes?
I just visited it.
Close to the 20-year lifespan of the panels, it might not move very much.
Well, we got quite a bit of acreage up there, you know, the old landfill.
I understand that.
But there's even, they've just done one over here not too far from us on a landfill. It's only been covered two years. They use a big concrete pads.
Right, they do that one.
And they bolt these to them pads and the pads can move.
Oh, I understand that, but I mean, the material underneath the cap is going to decompose over time.
Yeah, I know. But they say it won't be affected that much, but that's people talking about. I, I'm not an expert. I'm not a profession to know anything about it. But I asked, how much of our landfill would they be considering? They said with their experience, the whole thing would be useful. With the southern, anything that's got the subtlety of exposure. So that's 10-plus acres over there.
Pretty much all of it.
All right, so that's a biggie, I think. I'm looking forward to that materializing and I think it'd be a big, big burden off the taxpayers.
It's going to be known for our solar power. 18 megawatts, 60 megawatts.
Okay.
113.
Mr. Lavash, keep interrupting me.
All right.
Go ahead.
Uh, we have correspondents from Mass DOT informing the board. They have commented on Lenard Engineering, 75 percent design submission on Route 6719 in Warren Town Center project. And I'm seeking further comment from Lenard Engineering.
Did we get a copy of what their comments were?
Yes, we did.
Okay, we have to get a hold of Lenard Engineering and ask them when they're going to respond to the comments?
Because... Well, I know they're, they're probably done that and they should have. If, that'd have been Scottsdale here. He didn't let us know. We went to him one afternoon.
I just, I just want to make sure because with that 75 percent plan, we're on the Transportation Improvement Program for 2015. That's not too far away.
That's right.
So I just want to make sure we don't lose it because of that. So make sure Lenard Engineering's on top of it and make sure they give us some type of a comment, a written comment.
Give us a date by when they're going to have this answered and returned to DOT. That's what I'd like. I'm adding.
Yep, I just want to make sure we on top of it.
All right. Mr. Lavash?
That's it? Uh, we have electronic mail correspondence from Rosemary Scrivens, Central Regional Director of Mass Office of Business Development, informing the board, the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development, Greg Bellicki. Development, Greg Byellicky, will be in the area on Thursday, April 3rd. He will be visiting Warren Pumps, and invitation to the board members is extended and attending during the visit.
Okay.
The fire chief report for February 2014 is it.
Yep.
Okay, I'll write that.
We have correspondence from Gail Windus. She is a former Warren Council on Aging and the Select Board of her intentions to retire from her position effective June 20th, 2014. She thanks everyone for the opportunity given here to serve the seniors in the C O A.
And for future correspondence, we should say thank you for the time she spent working for the town. Can't send it yet, but she's not retiring until June, but keep it in the to-do folder, please.
All right. Okay. Next on the agenda is a mutual aid agreement. It's really old business, and we're going to discuss it one last time, I guess. This is the one, did you get to talk to the police chief today?
No, I didn't, but I'm going to talk to Mr. LaFleur, because he happens to be here, and I'm sure he can answer the question. My only question is this on that, though. If we sign a mutual aid agreement in Worcester, and I understand what it's for, so that we can bring our, whoever we have to bring to Worcester, and we still retain police powers in Worcester. Let me ask this, and it's a double question. Does that mean if you were to go to Worcester, you, say somebody was speeding, you would stop them for speeding?
No.
Okay. And they would retain their police powers in Warren?
Right.
Okay, it's the same thing, they...
Same idea, yeah. And see, if they have a prisoner or something of that effect, you know, that they have here, then they retain their police powers over that person while they're in Warren. Vice versa, us in Worcester, if we go to Worcester, we have a prisoner bringing to the, to the cell or to the court, then we retain police powers over that prisoner while we're in Worcester for anything that goes on there, might go on there if that was a criminal.
Let me ask this, and I know you're going to know what I'm talking about. In the past, sometimes in the past, we would bring prisoners to a different town, and they would tell the chief at that point, we can't have you watch them, because you don't have the power to do that. Does this eliminate that?
Yes. It would eliminate, because most of the, most of the towns want us to watch them, because they don't want to engage the liability. Usually, we're watching the prisoners because they're suicidal. You know, the possibility of them being suicidal, so that would mean that, obviously, if they watch them, they would incur a liability if something should go wrong. So, most towns don't want to watch them.
But you know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I have no problem with it, and I'd be willing to sign it. Thank you.
Okay, I entertain a motion to sign that, and...
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Where is that? You got it in this orange? That requires three signatures, right? Let's take the time and do this now, because we've been hanging on to this. Run by city and town. Okay, David, I'm going to give this to you first.
Oh, sure.
It ends up over there. All right, we've already, the next thing on the agenda was the Warren Pumps T I F. I think we've discussed that enough, right? Nothing more to say on that? And you're happy for now? You know we're working, all right, thank you. Budget discussions.
I thought we were doing that on Thursday, on Wednesday.
Why isn't it?
We have three small ones that we can cover tonight.
No problem.
Please pass one down.
All right, you've got a copy of that.
Is there a copy in the agenda file?
I got a copy.
Okay.
There you go. All right, the first one is on the assessors.
Assessors salary, didn't we already turn that over to the finance committee?
No, you turned over the website to the finance committee.
Excuse me?
I said you turned the website over to the finance committee.
Let's turn this one over to the finance committee, too. Only because I don't know what questions you asked. We know they're having a reval.
Right, the reval, it's a full reval year, that's the reason for the additional $14,500.
Yep.
They each have a step increase. That's why their full salaries went up. And the website would fall under the mapping.
Yep.
And that's increased the $1,800 to $5,600.
And we know there's a problem with the mapping already this year.
That's been taken care of.
Okay. So, they want to increase the mapping by 1,800 because...
Right, that's the annual maintenance.
That's the norm, okay. And the assistant assessor is the step increase, I take it?
Yep, and they put it down below, step increase, 415 web hosting, step increase.
Okay.
And that's down below, so we typed it out.
As much as I hate to say this, and as much as I would like to say we keep it level-funded, we can't. I would be in favor of turning it with a recommendation approved to the finance committee.
Okay. You agree?
Yeah.
All right, I'm wearing agreement, all right. How about the Council on Aging?
Let's see what the two increases are.
Budget, they're looking at an increase.
What, step increases, they did increase the expense by $1,000. Heating costs have gone up, gas has gone up, electric's gone up.
They also have maintenance on that new generator they went in.
Yeah, there's a maintenance though.
All right, again, as much as I hate to say we want to level fund...
Well, let me ask one question.
Yep.
You said something, Mr. Lavash, that new generator, isn't that under warranty?
Right.
Then you still have to do a maintenance program on it.
Oh, a maintenance program.
Right, there's a yearly contractual maintenance to have them keep it certified and make sure it's running and...
Well, like I said, as much as I hate to...
All right, I interrupted you, I'm sorry.
That's okay, as much as I hate to say it, we don't really have a choice in some of these, so I would be in favor of, again, with a recommendation approved to finance.
Okay, we have a consensus on that, all right.
And town, let's see, cemeteries and roads is level-funded. Of course, I have no problem with that. And that takes care of the three.
So, these three are okay, so you have a assignment, okay on that. Which one do you want? Initials anything?
No, we don't have to initial it.
All right.
So, just so I'm clear, you three gentlemen have approved all of the three of these budgets, and I'll pass these on to...
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Lavash, let's proceed with treasury warrants and invoices.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, excuse me one moment. Ms. Como actually introduced a memo to me this afternoon. I'd like to just turn over to you, and she may want to speak to this.
Well, at our last, at your last week's meeting, it was brought up about the hydrant rental, and you were going to pose some questions to the water department regarding the increase. During our meeting, we had a little bit of discussion regarding it. Also, the fire chief was present at our meeting last week, and so we asked him if there's been testing recently, and under his regime, they have not been pressure tested. They did have concerns about a couple spots in town where the pressure probably wouldn't sustain fire suppression.
Mm-hmm.
And so, that's where it stood. But, I mean, we still have concerns about the increase.
Yep.
That's huge. I have not checked on any other towns as to how they handle it, because most towns own their water district, to see if other towns are charged a rental fee, or a lease fee, whatever you want to call it. It just seems, you know, plus, I don't know the last time they did an inventory, if Carol has set up another inventory. I know a few years ago, we had an inventory, the hydrants, and they'd added on a couple, because they extended the line, like up to come tomorrow and such. So, I don't know if that's something we need to check into, is how many they're actually feeding us for.
Yeah, I think we should check into it. What we probably should do is ask the Warren and West Warren Water Districts to come in.
Mr. Chairman, permission to speak. With regards to the inventories, we did get in their initial letter indicating the fee increase, they are stating that it's 121 hydrants, but they're not specific as to which are new. I did put an email out to Carol, asking her for further information. I have yet to receive her confirmation.
And even if they give you a response to that, we should also ask, when's the last time they were tested, and are we sure they all work for the capabilities of fire protection? Because I know we had fire, we had fire hydrants that were a strange color at one time, which means, which means they didn't...
There still are.
They didn't have the pressure.
Well, that was our concern, too, was, you know, we're paying for a product that we may or may not be able to use, and that just doesn't seem fair.
Mm-hmm. So, we should ask for a complete new inventory, and where the locations are, what the, I have, when have they been tested, and we'd like a copy of the testing, so that we know all work and can be used. We've done that before.
The general condition of all hydrants that are working, and the numbers that aren't working, numbers that need replacement.
Yep, and...
And what's the color coding of the hydrants?
Yellow means it's not up to...
Yellow was West Warren.
Yeah, okay.
Yellow was West Warren.
Yellow was West Warren.
Black was not working.
That's right, black means they don't work, or didn't work very good.
Right.
So, let's ask them for their color coding, and have them all tested. I think we have to do that.
All right, did you say something about ask them to come in?
Let's get, let's get that information first.
Let's get the information first.
Yeah, and then ask them to come in.
Well, we still, okay, can we do treasury warrants now?
Yes.
Make a motion, we accept payroll warrant number 93, the amount of $36,575.36.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion, we accept, vendors warrant number 94, the amount of $39,448.60.
Second.
I got a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes from February 25th, 2014, as written.
Second.
I got a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, we accept minutes from March 11th, 2014, as written.
Second.
I got a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's them. Minister of Assistant Report, you got anything to write up to that?
I don't have anything to share this evening, John.
Okay, let's proceed to other business, other business. We have, how come I missed, other business. Well, I'm looking at something here. You have anything, Mr. Lavash?
Nothing, but I would like to congratulate the basketball teams, both the ladies and the boys. I believe the ladies went to division, and then boys went to the finals in states. They won the division, they went to the finals and states.
Well, I think we're, we're going to have an invite them teams in.
We invite them in. I agree, we should congratulate them. I think we want to plan something.
Yep.
Okay, let's plan something, and just, we can send them a letter saying that we're going to be inviting them in in the near future.
All right, okay, send them a letter of congratulations, okay.
That's all I have.
All right. The following items came in late here, but we need to, I want to act on these. We have a letter of engagement, and this is for our town auditors. It's a contract, and we have to sign them with them for their services, and nobody hear from finance or...
That would be Madeline. I would move...
But, here they are.
I would move that we authorize the chairman to sign the letter of engagement, so that we can use them. They've done it for a long, long time.
Right.
I would second.
Okay, I have a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so sign that off. All right, and I think there's another one here.
Yep.
Oh, Christopher Duffy has a, the last payment, which completes the close-up on the...
Fiscal year 2011 program.
2011 program, all right, and that's over here on Park Street, is it?
Yeah.
Park and what? So, I entertain a motion to have the chairman sign that to complete the last payment.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I see another grant like that. Okay, Mr. Delaski, do you have anything?
No, my only question is this, when, we have a meeting at 3:00 or 3:30 tomorrow?
Yeah.
Thursday?
Do you guys have something you were supposed to sign today, though, on the...
That I know of.
I don't want to leave tonight. Did you get the information that Nick sent through on the Whiskey Hill project up there? I did some correspondence with Nick, and Nick was wondering if we were ever approached by either Palmer or Ware about that, I said no.
I got the email correspondence and...
Were we ever contacted as...
Not that I'm aware of.
Butters or neighbors or anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
I just wanted to confirm that.
Absolutely not that I'm aware of. And as I said before, it was, it was a small-scale project when it first started. It was supposed to be for, almost like antique cars, and then now it got into the point where it's going to be all different classes of cars.
Well, I can't believe they're clearing that down on that mountain over there. I'll tell you, that was alarming to me. I don't know where we approach this, but we need some time for discussion. Maybe we'll do it at our work meeting. You've got any thoughts on that?
We could, no, we can do it at the work meeting, I have no problem with that.
All right, I have one more thing.
But is it possible that Warren really isn't a butter? Is there a sleeve of, you know, this Palmer Ware, is, are we on the exact southerly side of that?
I don't know, I know that...
Colonel Mountain is certainly not.
I know that supposedly, the, remember the old Corzek Farm? As you're going up the hill, last house on the right?
It's the line.
Okay, that was the last house, I think, in Warren.
It is.
And the land is really split after that. You go after that house, and it's now Palmer, then it goes to Ware.
Right.
And then back to Palmer.
Turns to Palmer about Bacon, just up the Bacon Road.
Yep.
To Ware, I should say, and it turns to Palmer at Corzek's old place.
Yep.
And then it goes down, past Bacon Road, it becomes Ware. So, it's, it's a couple of clicks into, into Palmer, so.
Why don't we just ask the assessors to see if we're butters to that?
Well, there's one of these pictures that has a boundary line going down through there, and it's amazing, this thing dry up against the boundary line on the picture, but I don't have that picture with me.
Mm-hmm, so we can find out.
But I think it's right on our boundary line. All right, another thing I'd like to discuss, the Comcast people, who we didn't ever sign a contract with, we've got a contract back from them. Igor, I'd like to have you and your committee, you guys here, we're going to schedule this for our next meeting, but Bennett, it's been controversial, there's so many misunderstandings, but people think we've signed a contract. We haven't. People think this contract entails the control of channels and the cost, which it doesn't. I'd like to do this publicly when we're on camera, tendentially, I'd like to schedule it for our next meeting for you, committee, to be here, and we show that we're all in agreement before the Sluckman signs this. But I would like to sign it.
That would be the...
All right, and if you guys have any difference of opinion, please say so.
No, I don't, we have to do it in an open meeting anyway, so.
Well, yeah, but I'd just like the committee here, and we'll, we'll talk to this, we'll have a brief discussion, and let everybody know what it is we're signing and what it is we're not signing, and what we don't have control of. That's amazing. Okay, our next meeting date, we are meeting every date, every Tuesday between now and election day. election day. I have no early meetings, most, all the meetings are scheduled from 7:00 p.m. And if nobody has anything else to say, I'll entertain.
Just so nobody can say they didn't understand what we said, the Board of Selectmen is meeting in a working meeting tomorrow afternoon to go over budgets.
Thursday.
Thursday.
On Thursday, I mean.
Thursday.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thursday at 3:00, at 3:30. So it would, it's an open meeting, but it's a working meeting, so the only people that are going to be able to talk at it is the Board of Selectmen. That's it. That's what a working meeting is.
And our finance committee.
And our finance committee.
It's a working meeting between the Select Board and the FinCon, is where we finalize our figures and come to some kind of agreement on the budget.
Well, we won't be finalizing that thing.
We'll be looking at them, we'll discuss them.
Did you get a small budget yet?
Have we got any, have you gleaned any information out of the state? I, I get all kinds of mixed messages on what they're doing this year. I understand there's going to be more school aid. Oh, I did want to ask you a question.
There's a little bit more school aid, we got a little bit more local aid, we got like $30,000 local aid.
Yeah.
Not a lot.
You did a solo act this, last week, going to our Pathfinder? Did you go?
Yeah, we went.
You went.
I had some, a couple FinCon members there.
Did you, was there anything new there and anything you wanted to discuss?
Well, we will be getting, um, the roof, the capital plan of the roof is being installed. Uh, the first payment will be due, not FY15, but FY16. They approved, well, they were probably going to approve, let me back up. They submitted two budgets. One was .34% lower than last year and the second one was .97% lower than last year.
Both lower.
Right. The .97 did not include any form of capital items, the .34 did. Uh, so the, the school committee for Pathfinder was probably going to approve or recommend the .34 because it included $80,000, well, $82,000 in capital items because the following year, when the roof hits, the payments for the town, they didn't want to ask for any additional capital. But population at Pathfinder has gone down. We lost nine, seven or nine students from Warren.
From Warren?
Yep.
How about the overall in the school?
So our portion, um, we still pay about 8%.